Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting, Tuesday, May 17th, 2016, 7 o'clock. I now call this meeting in order. Denise, can you call roll, please?
Certainly. Good evening. Chairman Grantham?
Here.
Commissioner Bellantoni is an excused absence. Commissioner Maloney?
Here.
Commissioner Dunderman?
Here.
Commissioner Embry?
Unexcused.
Commissioner Ladue?
Here.
Commissioner Gill, or Councilmember Gill?
Here.
Thank you. Can I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from March 15th, 2016, in our regular meeting?
I'll move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of Canyon City Planning Commission held on March 15th, 2016.
So moved. Is there a second?
I second.
Denise, can you call roll, please?
Commissioner Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Dunderman?
Aye.
Chairman Grantham?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Thank you, and I'll go a little bit out of order tonight. We need to stand and say the pledge, so...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Thank you. At this time, we have a presentation from the Colorado Springs Joint Land Use Study by PPACOG. Terry, can you introduce Mr. Potts?
Yes, this is Mr. Potts. He's with the Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments, and he's going to give us a little bit of an update on this study.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. As I stated, my name is Brian Potts. I'm a planner with the Pike's Peak Region... I'm sorry, the Pike's Peak Council of Governments. I've been on this study for just a few months, and so we're just getting kicked off with this, so we're in our early part. So I'm here to give a brief overview, since it does relate to land use and regional planning issues surrounding the military operations and military installations in our area. A joint land use study, there have been 120 joint land use studies performed around the country, but this is the first one that has been done in Colorado. It's primarily funded through the Department of Defense grant, as well as some matching funds from DOLA through the state, and then in-kind donations from various agencies within a four-county region in which this study covers. So we have Fremont County, Pueblo County, El Paso County, and Teller County, which are all participating in this study. To give you some background on who is currently represented from Fremont County and your region, we do have Tim Payne, who is on our policy committee, and then Matt Koch, forgive me if I pronounce like I never remember if it's Koch or...
It's Koch.
Koch, okay, great. And he is participating on the technical committee. Basically, these studies, the joint land use study, looks at military operations, how they're affecting the community, and how the community may be able to better partner with military installations, and basically a way of helping looking at land use issues in a joint effort, rather than just the military looking at them isolated from the community. It's a way to kind of build relationships. During the course of this study, which is non-binding, it's going to create recommended strategies at the end of this, it's going to help local communities have tools when it comes to land use issues related to military operations. So for example, in Fremont County, we understand that Canyon City as well, that there are helicopters that are associated with Fort Carson, and in some cases, other aircraft that utilize the airspace above, that may create some kind of noise impacts. I'm also curious, and the commission can feel free to chime in on this, but any dust or smoke from operations that may be occurring. We're not sure if it's getting this far out, but we know it's been affecting Pueblo West, as well as some parts of Fremont County. And the idea is that when these issues arise, we can work through the community, through the planning directors, through elected officials representing these communities. They can work with the military installations and crafting strategies to address some of these things that may affect quality of life. So that's sort of the goal in terms of the outcome of this study. This will involve some examination of local land use codes. Again, since it's purely advisory and recommendational, it'll be up to local governments as to how they want to utilize some of these tools that are going to be in this study, based upon what they're seeing, and how much they want to partner, or in what ways they want to work with the military installations in their area. So the five installations that are involved, Shreve was most recently added. They were just added this month. But the four that have always been part of the study from the beginning, when we got the grants in October, are Shreve Air Force Base, Peterson Air Force Base, Fort Carson, and the Air Force Academy. Now clearly, these are five different installations with different military operations and different community impacts, in some cases, and also different relationships. So this study is not only going to look at where is there room for improvement, but also highlight what is working well currently. And so this is a good opportunity to find out what our community's working on with military installations, and what is working well. So at this point, we're trying to get public input through a survey we have on our website, which is www.ppacg.org. And on the main page, third item down, is "Take Our Survey." And we're hoping to get word out to the public in all of these communities so that the citizens can provide their input as to what they think is working well and what isn't. Or where there's room for improvement. At the end, the policy committee, so the way this is arranged is that PPACG, we are merely the grant administrator and sort of the facilitator of this study. Our job is to get the right people, you know, in terms of representatives from each community. They make up a policy committee, so that's made up of elected officials from many of the communities involved. And then they kind of help with vetting some of the recommendations for strategies and helping guide crafting of this study. We staff are here to provide the research and data collection, and also to do the public outreach. The technical committee, which serves immediately underneath the policy committee, is made up the planning officials. And their job is to help with looking at how do some of these strategies fit in with their respective regulatory structures, to make sure we're not recommending some strategies that are either unworkable or fall in the face of local land use policy. And then below that, to help out the technical committee, are working groups that may focus on one particular issue related to the study. So far, we have identified between the public input and military input and feedback from community leaders, so far, we have identified 26 different compatibility issues related to land use. In this case, what I mentioned earlier with helicopters, there may be a working group that may look particularly at HAMIT training, the High Altitude Mountain Environment Training that Fort Carson engages in. And many units from throughout the country come to Colorado specifically for our topography. Now, this is a good thing, of course, because it means that Fort Carson has a high likelihood that it's going to continue to be utilized for these missions. But this is a good chance to say, where's there room for improvement? And a working group will develop some strategies in consultation with the local governments that are affected by this issue, and craft a strategy that hopefully will help out all communities that are affected. And also look at opening channels of communication for future... Working together in the future after the study is completed. This study is a two-year study. At this point, we're approved through the end of 2017. With the addition of Shreve, we expect that to be extended a few extra months for issues related to Shreve. At the end, towards the end, there'll be a draft document that will come out and will be available for public review, for commission review. And we want feedback at that point to make sure that, you know, the elected officials and planning directors and community input has helped us as a group collectively to come up with good strategies. With that, again, the survey is incredibly important, so I recommend to all of you, as well as your constituents, local citizens, to please go online and fill out the survey. It literally only takes about five minutes at most. And that helps guide the direction of where this study is going to go, and highlight what issues are most important to the public, in addition to what we already know is important to the military. With that, I would love to field any questions you have, and thank you for your time.
Any on the board have any questions?
I have one question, and that has to do with what's the deadline for responding to the survey you're taking?
That's excellent, and I forgot to mention that. The deadline for the survey at this point is May 31st. However, because we are seeing a lot of response coming in now, it's been accelerating, the more people hear about this study, we're probably going to extend that deadline if we see that we're continuing to get a good response rate at the end of the month. So we may extend it by a couple of weeks to the middle of June. And that's the way it's looking right now, because we seem to be getting approximately 60 to 80 responses per day as of this week. We have almost 500 surveys that have been filled out, and we're looking forward to additional input to make sure we really have a good, not necessarily a scientifically significant sample, but at least a good idea of what the spread of issues are. So, yeah, thank you for that. I have also left some paper copies of the survey here, in case anyone does need a paper copy or wants to take a look at the questions on the survey.
From the surveys already turned in, what major problems have you seen?
So far, they seem to be mainly focused around the two large installations, Air Force Academy and Fort Carson. And of course, that has to do with the fact that they do have a lot of flight operations, for one thing. Air Force Academy, it tends to be the cadet training in that area. And then also concerns about the reopening of a bike path that had been open in the past, but due to security concerns, had been closed. And then with Fort Carson, it is the noise from artillery training that is a concern, especially in the Pueblo West area, they get a lot of that. You can even hear it in Pueblo, apparently, according to some of the officials I've talked to in Pueblo. And then smoke, when there is a prescriptive burn or even a wildfire, sometimes that smoke is carrying in a certain direction, usually to the southeast or east. And in addition to that, the helicopters, as I mentioned prior, is that in some cases, those are night operations, because that is essential to their mission in preparing for the campaigns and, you know, training for Afghanistan and mountainous terrain. And so sometimes there have been instances where that has created some noise associated with helicopters flying in the area. And Fort Carson has been trying to address that, but this is why this study's important, is that we want to know where is there room for improvement? What can other installations learn from that? Chairman?
Councilman Gill.
Are you asking for this survey to come from just the residents or from city staff and such?
Well, pretty much everyone that's involved in the area. I mean, survey results filled out by city staff is completely acceptable. I mean, it's...
What I'm asking is the public invited to do this survey? The general public?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. The general public, pretty much anyone that works, operates in, lives in these counties.
Ms. Burnith? Is there some way we can maybe get with Kerry and have a little article put on this with the website? So we have some participation from Canyon City?
Sure, absolutely. I was planning on talking to Jen O'Connor about getting that connection on our website, to the survey.
And I can certainly send that information along to you, anything you need, so... Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Terry, was that just a presentation, or do we need to make a motion or anything?
That was simply a presentation. You don't need to take any action.
Moving on, we have the year-one review of the alternative parking plan for the Villa Carina located at 431 Harrison Avenue. Terry, can we have the staff report, please?
Yes, sir. Before I begin, let me go over what I provided to you at your place on the dais. I was requested to provide the minutes of the 4/21/15 meeting. That's where the alternative parking arrangement was approved. I also provided a site plan of what the parking arrangement is. And then I also provided you with suggested motions, or I should say decisions, that you may arrive at, either as an approval or as a denial, but as a recommended process for you there. Villa Carina was approved in 2015 with an alternative parking arrangement, and it had three conditions. Those are in your staff report on the first page. They were able to have three parking spaces on-site and seven on the street, for a total of 10. They originally were required to have 13. The site plan that's provided to you shows that arrangement. And then the parking is to be reviewed once yearly on or around the anniversary date of the approval of the conditional use permit, which allowed them to do the boarding house there in the R2 district for the first three years of the permit, in order to determine that adequate parking is being provided, and that the parking is not adversely impacting the neighborhood in which the facility is located. The third condition was that if the Planning Commission does decide that that is not working, they would have a public hearing to that effect and suggest modifications either to the permit or to the parking arrangement. There is nothing specifically required for this review, so staff suggested to Villa Carina that they provide a review of their parking needs and uses for the last year, which they have provided. That's also in your packet. We also, the staff, recently conducted just random site visits, excuse me, site visits to see how the parking is going, and those photographs are in your staff packet as well. And we have also noted that there have not been any complaints about the parking situation or anything else at Villa Carina in the last year. So we'll leave that to you, and if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them. And Jason Messer is here. He was the applicant for Villa Carina last year, and he can also answer questions, if you have any.
Any questions from Commissioners to Staff?
Question, Chairman. I have one question.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
In the back, I saw the three... I looked at the three off-street parking there in the back of the building that you guys have. You guys have tires, one tire that's over, it looks like a septic vent or some kind of vent, water vent out there.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Austin, are you asking this of Jason? Maybe we should have him come up to the...
Yeah, please stand up there, please. Sorry.
And he can introduce himself.
If you'd please state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Jason Messer. Address is 2860 Melvina, Canyon City.
Sir, Commissioner?
Sir, in the back, you have the tire surrounding. I'm not sure what it was, but it was sitting over PVC coming out of the ground. Is there any way we can do a little better job of maybe marking that, that it's there?
Certainly, and I guess I hadn't seen the tire myself, so I don't know.
I mean, I understand why it's there. It's there to protect.
Sure, yeah.
You know, I completely understand that, but if it's going to be like a parking spot or whatever, you know...
I think that's a fair request, yes.
Yeah, just to make it better visible for people to see, so we don't do any damage to anything else.
And really, that visible appearance is pretty important to us, because...
Right, definitely.
...be a contributor to the neighborhood and not a detractor.
Other than that, I think the building looks great, yeah.
Can you tell us what the function of that PVC pipe is?
It's a clean-out for the sewer line.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and there's multiple ones in that. I think there's three separate sewer taps, so there's three clean-outs back there. It's just kind of in an awkward spot there, so it does need something to kind of mark it, but something better than a tire.
Yeah, that's the only thing I saw, yeah. Thank you.
Jason, when I drove by, I was noticing the parking spots were all full, to the south and to the east. And then I noticed there was also people parking in the alleyway behind the building. Was that originally part of our parking spaces, or is that something added, or...
You know, the thing is, is that the parking there, it fluctuates, you know, and I think that we've managed that fluctuation pretty responsibly. But because it's a communal living where we are truly trying to provide support for the residents there, you know, there will be folks there during the day that aren't there during the night, because they're providing, you know, some kind of social service potentially, or just visiting people. So I think that there's probably some liberties taken as far as visitors parking in that area. You know, we have some pretty... We have requirements for the designation of parking areas, and that is what's in the site plan that you see there.
There are three parking spaces behind the building in the alley, though.
Okay.
Or off of the alley, I should say.
Okay, that's what I was...
Any other questions from Commissioners? Thank you, Jason. Any further discussion? Mr. Havens?
Mr. Chairman, I just would add to the staff report. Since this got onto my radar when it was first approved, I drive by that facility almost daily, once or twice a day. Jason, you've done a real good job, I think, in improving the beauty and attractiveness of the neighborhood with your facility. I kind of watched it happen as it happened. But in all my passing-by events, I've never observed any form of traffic congestion that would give me any concern about what we've done and what you've done as a commission. I think it's working.
Thank you, Mr. Havens. Entertain a motion in a second? To, I'm assuming, approve the yearly review?
Yes, you should have that in front of you as a suggested response. And if you would like to approve it, there is some suggested wording, and you can just go right from there. The only thing that I would suggest that you might modify, because we did not have anyone else from the public speaking, would be to strike on the first line, other interested and other interested parties. But if you want to do an approval, this wording, I think, would work for it.
Well, I'll move...
Actually, you're not going to make a motion. You would...
We're just recommending approval.
You're going to be making a determination, and so you would be reading this verbatim.
And then voting on it.
And then what? I apologize.
And voting on it.
Okay, Commissioner Maloney? So I'm recommending, or...
You're the decision-maker in this instance.
Okay.
After considering the staff report, evidence provided by the applicant, the Planning Commission finds that the alternative parking arrangement is in compliance with its original approval, and that parking for the facility has not created adverse impacts within the neighborhood or the facility, and so determines to approve the year-one parking review for Villa Carina located at 431 Harrison Avenue.
We need a second on that as well, Mr. Havens?
Why not? It would help.
I second that. Commissioner Dunderman? Denise, can you call roll, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Dunderman?
Aye.
Chairman Grantham?
Aye.
And Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Congratulations, Jason. We'll see you next year. Next, I'd like to open the public hearing to consider the adoption of an amendment to Title 17, zoning regulations of the City of Canyon City, more particularly described to consider the addition of the comprehensive sign plans to Chapter 17.30. And this is city-initiated, so Terry, can we have a staff report?
Yes, sir. This is for an addition to the sign code for comprehensive sign plans. Public Notice was published at least 15 days prior to this public hearing as required. Terry?
Terry, can I stop you for a second?
Yes.
The provisions of the Canyon City Municipal Code, and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision and development regulations, and the comprehensive plan of the City of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of this hearing as set forth verbatim. Please continue, Terry.
Thank you, sir. Okay, staff is suggesting that comprehensive sign plans may be a helpful tool in future development along Highway 50 and other commercial areas of the city. This need has been identified in previous discussions with business owners and developers. We believe that this is a simple, presents a simple but potentially important addition to the code that can be enacted without other revisions to the current code. The Planning Commission did consider these changes and made a recommendation to proceed with this amendment at their work session on March 15th. I will make my remarks relatively brief. Currently, off-premise signage is allowed to not have a face of greater than 32 square feet and cannot be more than eight feet high. These restrictions, however, can limit how signs are utilized and may require more and even more intrusive signage than might otherwise be necessary, especially when we're talking about multi-parceled development. I've given you a couple of examples, and we'll go through those in just a second. This simple sign code addition allows a unified development or even like-minded business owners who are on adjacent parcels to construct uniformly-designed signage regardless of underlying lots or parcel lines. It's not suggested to be required in any way, but offers another regulatory tool that people can use if they wish to. I gave you examples of the City Market Center. Now that's on three parcels, they have four signs. The four signs are freestanding throughout this development. They also have signage on their buildings. It could be, and I'm not a sign professional, I'm not going to purport to be one, but it could be that they might be able to consolidate some of that signage, put the signage closer to the roadway for those people especially who are far, the strip mall that's further away from Fremont Drive, and perhaps consolidate that signage, make it more attractive, utilize the signage better, and this plan may allow them to do that. So that's one thing. The former Creek side, which is now called Shops at Four Mile, came to city staff not too long ago and suggested that they might be further subdividing. If, for instance, and I have no idea if this is going to happen, but I'll give you this as an example. If they were to subdivide in the middle of, in their parking lot, and that subdivision included their large marquee sign, then that signage would be off-premise, would then be resulting in an off-premise sign for the rest of the development. That doesn't necessarily... That wouldn't necessarily work. We would be dealing with off-premise signage that had restrictions as to height and to face amount that wouldn't make a lot of sense for a shopping center. We want to make it easier to, for people to be able to do this kind of signage, and we think that this probably starts that process. It may also be helpful as Highway 50 progresses with its plan as well. There are not, this is a performance type of process, so there are not hard and fast rules with that. There is nothing in this signage that says it has to be a certain square footage or it has to be a certain height. We would certainly use our guidelines right now in our sign code. But what we are looking for is to have, and I'll go through the criteria with you just a little bit. Is that the sign, whatever sign plan that, that a, a business might come up or multiple businesses might come up with, would provide the minimum total signage necessary to accommodate the needs of the development. It would hopefully eliminate number, height and/or bulk of signage that would otherwise be allowed. It would eliminate non-conforming signage or sign structures if they're already existing. We do have a lot of places where sign structures, old sign structures have never come down. So we were hoping that that might happen if people come together and have, um, a comprehensive sign plan. We might be able to, uh, eliminate some of those. This would provide signage that's uniform in terms of quality and character of the development. It would, it should not substantially alter the basic character of the zone district in which it's located or jeopardize the development or redevelopment potential of property within the district. And it should conform with all other zoning requirements contained in Title 17. So that's the criteria. And if you would like, I can try to answer questions that you have. Um, you have a draft of it in your packet and also findings of fact in an advisory report. We had, oh, I wanted to let you know that this was published, um, on May 3rd and there have been no responses from the public about this sign plan.
Thank you, Terry. Mr. Havens, do you have anything to add?
I do have a couple of questions for the planner and for the, for the record. It's my understanding that this is a tool which is optional to the property owners and not mandatory in any way under the code. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And I guess follow up to that would be, uh, if there is an election to use the comprehensive sign as opposed to a, a number of separate signs of one sort or another, uh, would, would there be an elimination of the right of those using the comprehensive sign to, to have additional signs such as, as we have now? Or in, in other words, would the comprehensive sign take place of other signs that we routinely find?
The intention would be that the comprehensive sign plan took the place of other signage.
Not adding new signage where we're, we're having a different form of signage and, and hopefully reducing signage.
That's correct.
I, I think that's important for our record and understanding.
Thank you, Mr. Havens. Is there any questions from the commissioners to city staff? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. I would now entertain a motion in a second to approve the addition to the code.
Um, I'll move.
Commissioner Maloney?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to add new section seventeen dot three zero dot zero five zero, comprehensive sign plan to chapter seventeen dot three zero, signs of title seventeen of the Canyon City Municipal Code.
Mr. Havens, do we have, can we do the finding of fact with the, uh, recommendation or do we have to do them separately?
We, we have, usually as, as I understand it, unless you've changed procedure during my absence, uh, gone through the findings and then gone to the, the final recommendation.
Yeah, do the finding of facts first.
Um, okay, so read the purpose as well. Purpose to add regulatory tool, tool for the development of comprehensive or joint business signage. Canyon City Planning Commission, upon conducting a public hearing on the above captioned zoning ordinance amendment and after considering the testimony presented by city staff and any other interested parties, finds as follows. Notice of public hearing was properly given as required by law.
There's a second to the finding of facts?
Before you do that, you should also, um, make a determination about number two. If you wish to approve, then you would logically find that the amendments are necessary and appropriate.
We also find the proposed amendments are necessary and appropriate.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Ladue? Denise, can you call roll please?
Certainly. Commissioner Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Chairman Grantham?
Aye.
And Commissioner Dunderman?
Aye.
Can I entertain a motion for recommendation?
Chairman?
Commissioner Dunderman?
Like to make a motion based upon the above findings of fact, Canyon City Planning Commission hereby makes the following recommendation to the city, to the council of the, of the city of Canyon City to approve of the amendment to the zoning ordinance.
There's a second?
A second.
Commissioner Maloney? Denise, can you call roll please?
Commissioner Dunderman?
Aye.
Commissioner Maloney?
Aye.
Chairman Grantham?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Next, I'd like to open a public hearing to consider the adoption of amendment Title 17 zoning regulations to the city of Canyon City. More particularly described to repeal and reenact chapter seventeen point one four transitional mixed use overlay zoning. The provisions of Canyon City Municipal Code and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision and development regulations and the comprehensive plan of the city of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of this hearing as set forth verbatim. Terry, can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, sir. This is a city initiated application, uh, for, um, major revisions to the transitional mixed use overlay zone, chapter seventeen fourteen. Uh, staff proposes to enhance the purposes of the overlay zone, to restructure how and when yard and bulk requirements are determined and when a TMU project is to be utilized and general reorganization of the materials within the chapter. The planning commission began discussions on this with staff, um, in February of 2015 and has participated in seven work sessions on this topic. Um, almost two years ago, we met with, um, interested real estate and development professionals who were concerned about the barriers to development of properties that we have since characterized as underutilized. These are properties where the original use or uses of an existing building or property may no longer be relevant to the neighborhood in which it's located. Um, they're vacant sometimes, but not necessarily. But these properties may no longer function as they once did under the constraints of underlying zoning. Um, staff was tasked with formulating other avenues, if possible, for reasonable and thoughtful redevelopment of the types of properties shown in the table, um, that is on page two of your staff report. In the end, um, and I will tell you that, um, this has been a long and drawn out process. We started with attempting to write, um, a specific and separate piece of code called developing underutilized properties. We decided that that wasn't going to work and tried to find something that already existed and modify it somewhat in order to make this also, um, work for this purpose. And so we, um, arrived at the transitional mixed use overlay. In adding these things to the transitional mixed use overlay, we wanted to make sure that it still functioned as it was supposed to in any case. And that was, that was essential. Um, I'm going to go through some of the, uh, major revisions. In the staff report, I've broken these down into major and minor. And I will go through some of these and I'm going to do this relatively quickly since you have all spent a great deal of time on the TMU in any case. First of all, the purpose, we added items E, F, G, and H um, to this section that specifically talks about redeveloping underutilized properties. However, even so, um, as this is put into the TMU, it is put in with the expectation of quality of design and compatibility with surrounding properties. Um, this was actually first accomplished with the St. Scholastica property when it was included in the TMU overlay in 2004. Um, in 2002 or 2003, the TMU was put, um, was overlaid on certain areas of the city. Uh, along South Ninth, along East Main, um, the portions of the hospital development area on North Fifteenth, certain areas of, um, north of the central business district. Those are all basically contiguous properties. These are, this is the overlay zone. In 2004, um, a change was made in putting the TMU on a standalone piece of property, which was St. Scholastica. And that is a suggestion here as well, that it may apply to diverse properties in the city. And like I said, that was, that was started in 2004. So the purpose additions are to encourage redevelopment of properties in diverse areas of the city where the original use or uses of an existing building or property may no longer be relevant to the neighborhood in which it's located. It may, this kind of redevelopment may include mixed uses as long as the project respects the residential nature of the neighborhood. It is to encourage creativity in property design and landscape that minimizes impacts on existing development. While it enhances the character of the area in which the project is located, it, it also is to encourage the bundling of small adjacent parcels into unified projects. Um, the second part of that is to the, the relationship to the underlying district. The TMU, even though it's overlaid on top of underlying zoning, so you could have, um, the TMU over an R1, R1 zone district or a commercial district, you are always allowed to develop according to the underlying zone district. You aren't required to use the TMU. You're only required to use the TMU when you wish to do a mixed use development or if you are going to be requesting a use that's not allowed in the underlying zone district. I would also say that sometimes the TMU got, is, can be a little bit complicated in its application. And there were certain lot coverage requirements that were not arbitrary, but were set based on whether you had, you were doing commercial and residential or residential and commercial. And so rather than having those lot, those lot coverages in this particular, um, section of the code, we have suggested that they be removed and that the lot coverages and setbacks and all yard and bulk requirements be established when a project is approved. Because it's very site specific and it's also use specific. And at that time, those things will be determined. Also, the uses will be determined and that is in this section now and spelled out very, very clearly, we hope. We've also tried to clarify when it's appropriate to submit a TMU project. So those are outlined for you, A through E. There are when you have to do additions to existing developments, when you have certain additions to previously approved TMUs, um, any new commercial, industrial, mixed use or public development, um, where the uses are or will be mixed or are not allowed in the underlying zone district. Um, the poor, the performance guidelines have been made to be mandatory and not discretionary. The approval criteria includes adherence to the performance guidelines. Um, we have changed something about the appeal process so that it more closely follows the same process in other sections of Title 17. We have also added, uh, an amendment process that was not in the TMU previously. We've also made some minor revisions. Um, we have removed the definitions and put them into, um, chapter seventeen oh eight. We have updated some of the prohibited uses because of changes that were made to the industrial district last year. Um, we have changed some items that have to do with conditions of approval because of other, like for instance, site planning was added in 2007 and wasn't considered as part of this that was put into effect in 2002, 2003. Um, some of these other things are also just organizational, so I won't get into those. We have had no response to this from the public, from our public notice. And, um, we have included the findings of fact in advisory report for you. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you if I can.
Mr. Havens, do you have anything to add?
I would just add, I missed all the workshops where you went through all of this. So I appreciate your effort and, uh, I've, I reviewed, uh, the proposed, um, ordinance with changes contained in it twice and I find no reason to recommend against any of the proposed changes.
Is there any commissioners that have questions for staff? Then we've worked for almost over a year on this. Right? Seeing now, I'd like to close the public hearing and entertain a motion for the finding of facts.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, in the spirit of encouraging redevelopment.
Commissioner Maloney?
I move to repeal and reenact chapter seventeen dot fourteen of the zoning regulations Title 17. Um, purpose, enhance the purposes of the overlay zone, restructure how and when yard and bulk requirements are determined and when a TMU project is to be utilized. And three, general reorganization of the materials within the chapter. Motion one, this Canyon City Planning Commission, upon conducting a public hearing on the above captioned zoning ordinance amendment and after considering the testimony presented by city staff and other interested parties, finds as follows, notice of the public hearing was properly given as required by law and the proposed amendments are necessary and appropriate.
Second?
A second.
Commissioner Dunderman? Denise, can you call roll please?
Commissioner Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Dunderman?
Aye.
Chairman Grantham?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Can I entertain a finding of facts motion?
Uh, Chairman?
Commissioner Maloney?
I'd like to move based upon the findings of fact, the Canyon City Planning Commission hereby makes the following recommendation to the council of the city of Canyon City, approval of the amendment to the zoning ordinance.
Is there a second?
A second.
Commissioner Ladue? Denise, can you call roll please?
Commissioner Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Chairman Grantham?
Aye.
And Chair, uh, Commissioner Dunderman?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.